Then Chief Jalbert, who was there for about five years, decided to go with this app dispatch. He would get notice from ECC if they were going to call and send out a group of engines. Then he would send out the text. And then when they answered the text, the first five that answered pretty much would get formed up in a grouping and get sent out. And it was a lot quicker than the way they were doing it before. But Jalbert retired. And so we have a new chief, and I'm not quite sure how he anticipates doing it. He seems to put it back in the hands of the chief in charge of ECC dispatch. And right now, the chiefs meeting, we're going through reestablishing the OES request, mutulate request, and all of that. I don't see a big change in it. We've been a very valuable asset to them. They really enjoy working with us. We get great reviews, and we've got the equipment to die for. So we're matching what everybody else is doing, so they're not, by calling us, they're not stepping down a notch. They know that we're going to come qualified and work hard. So out of that money, the, we don't have a choice on this, because when you go to work for OES, you're on contract, and they pay a rate that we have to agree on. So ninety-seven thousand one hundred eighty-one fifty was paid to the personnel when they came back. Now, we pay that out of our stipend, and then when we get our OES check, it reimburses that, so it's a hundred percent paid back. But we did get seventy-seven thousand five hundred eighty-eight that paid for the use of that engine. And that money goes into our capital reserve, and it's used for engine maintenance and other things like that. So it's available for any capital reserve projects and things. Then eighteen thousand four hundred ninety-two twenty-five paid for admin and duty coverage. So it pays for the work comp insurance, it pays for the person's statement back that's helped covering in the absence of Scott. This just gives you an idea over the years, the growth of our responses. You saw a little rise there in twenty seventeen, and then it kind of went down a little bit, but we're back to, we're back up there in the three hundreds, and right now, we're on track to break the twenty seventeen numbers pretty good. So in twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, ten years, we've had a forty-two percent increase in our calls, four point two percent growth each year. In the next ten years, we could be looking at four hundred and sixty-three calls a year if we stayed on that track. We've had steady growth since that ten-year span with pretty much Jazzy Town, self-help, and another development. Mission Meadows, Mission Heights were involved for them, but it does play an impact. With the growth, we could see the, yeah, with the projection of four hundred and sixty-three calls per year, the department will need staffing facilities, and that number may be greater than projected based on the growth of the community. So right now, we're looking at potentially our airport area on North River or Indian Valley, I guess.
Indian Valley.
So that projects to be potentially four hundred homes. We could easily say that's going to be eight hundred people plus, maybe a thousand people. Up on, by Magdalena, how many homes, Scott? Thirty?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight homes. So there's another, maybe two to three people per home up there. Mission Bluffs is only twelve homes, and then we have a couple of other projects, and there's a lot of interest on these empty lots in town. With that growth will come the business side of it, the business growth, and we're actually starting to see interest and people looking at lots in the downtown area. And let's face it, when you get that kind of population in here, we're, we know that there's going to be another store coming, there's going to be more things coming than just that. So I, I, I know of someone interested in there that's involved with the airport thing, and just chatter is that not just putting four hundred homes over there and calling it, other support facilities would be involved in potentially doing that, knowing the impact it would put on this community for a store, a park, or things of that nature. Can't say what it would be specifically, but knowing that those things will cause that to happen, we would address it. So four hundred and sixty-three calls is important because when you look at departments that changed their model of all volunteer department, and they start supplementing with staff coverage or having duty officers and more people, after you hit the four fifty to five hundred mark, that's more than one call per day. And that doesn't mean you get one call per day. You might get three or four. And if you work at the school and you're on the volunteer fire department and there's four calls during your day, you just can't keep running out, you know, of your job. And that's, when I was with Paso L毙 back in the nineties, that's what happened. But they had fifty volunteers in two stations, but once we hit that threshold, it's just not feasible. You can't, you can't provide the service and keep it up. So that's kind of a trigger point. So looking at where that number comes in, that was a ten-year projection based on four point two if we just stayed steady. And all indications are showing that that could be five years from now. I mean, it could go quicker than that. It's just the economy's going to play a role and things like that. So that's a number to really pay attention to, because again, that affects what we do. And in order to do it, we need to address these other issues.
Right, so at the, at the four hundred and sixty-three level, you would expect possibly a hybrid system of volunteers and paid call, or, I mean, volunteers and.
Well, as I said, under personnel, we start talking about a duty officer position, necessarily a single person, where we're paying benefits and all that, but people that are qualified, that can do a twenty-four hour shift and commit themselves to the district for that day. So guaranteed, they're not going to be off at the movies, or they gotta run out to dinner, or they gotta leave town for something, a doctor's appointment. They're coming here eight to eight, and they're going to cover a shift, so we have calls. They may only do one a month, but you know, if we only have three or four of those a month, we can get people that are qualified to come in and just work that shift, and then it's just an hourly rate.
Okay.
And that's a model Templeton was working with before they just passed that tax initiative and raised their monies up to where they now have staffed personnel twenty-four seven.
And there were about a thousand calls this month?
Well, it was eight fifty, no, five eighty, I'm sorry. It was five eighty, and Scott and I like to say, they go to head or corner block.
Passado Lane.
Passado Lane. You know, they're, they, of course, you know, they're trying to pass their tax, they fluff their, their numbers, but their calls, they had to go, they had to respond. And it justified it, and you know, so someone built a care facility in San McGill, that number could be way up. San McGill is twenty-four seven, three hundred sixty-five day on call response department. We've funded three hundred thirty-one calls in twenty-twenty. Two hundred and sixty of those calls, that was seventy-seven percent, between six and ten at night. So that was kind of daytime hours, and you can see the difference kind of changed. Seventy-one calls were between ten PM and six AM, that was at nighttime. So the majority of our calls are during daytime hours, and we have people at home at night. Two hundred twenty-three calls were between eight and eight, that's your daytime hours. Sixty-seven percent, that's like two-thirds, again, during the day. Between four and ten at night, twenty-six percent, one-third of our calls. So we're busy in the afternoons. And you can see it's fairly consistent. Ninety-six calls, twenty-nine percent were on the weekends. Again, we have people that are more available and at home. And Monday through Friday versus two days on the weekend, the call numbers were pretty similar. We get a little busier on the weekend hours.
So I have a question on the influx of Camp Rockers?
Yes.
You were saying that you might be responding more to them because they might be preoccupied with.
Anytime you add people, like COVID happened, they didn't have the National Guard coming out to drill and train, so their numbers were really down. So our call volume dropped. They weren't out there setting fire to the grass, they weren't out there doing heat strokes, they weren't out doing the things that we respond out there for. We supplement them, we're mutually to them.
Right.
They have to, they're on maneuvers now, they're anticipating a lot more activity because the base has fallen under civilian operation, and the military command is focusing on war. So they're going to be having a lot more activity over there, and they've changed some of their functions that do that. In the process, they also set up this Kitty Camp, Kitty City, they call it, right?
Kid City.
Kid City. And they talked about fifteen hundred, and they're not even there yet, they've already bumped it to five thousand. But they're going to put in twelve federal firefighters that'll be with Camp Rockers Fire. They're solely committed to Kid City, but they can respond on the base to fires, that won't change our dynamic at all, we'll still respond out there for that. We won't be responding up there for medical aids in the Kid City.
You will not?
We will not be.
Okay.
So they have a special, they're going to have doctors, they're going to have nurses, they have teachers, they have counselors, they're going to have firefighters, they're going to have people to be there and take care of all that.
Okay, that's what I was.
Yeah. But the other operations on the base, nothing changes as of yet. We still are on a mutual aid, and we still will respond, and primarily, I would say, fire, because with everything they're anticipating putting up there, the military, the federal firefighters will be able to respond on the base with the Camp Rockers guys as well. So on a medical aid, I don't think we'll be going up there. I think that will actually drop a little bit. So based on the activity of the rest of the military, what they're doing could increase our activity, but it remains to be seen how that's going to play out. Okay, a little repetitive, but we responded to the three hundred thirty-one calls, remember three point three in twenty-twenty. The fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy-nine twelve was what was rolled down for the firefighters. Average call was costing us forty-seven fifty-two per call, so you just took the overall number and divided by the number of calls, and I did it by the personnel number. Then on the duty coverage, last year, ten thousand dollars of that was based on coverage when Scott was out, and then coverage on other days was around the two thousand seventy-six. I just divided that by the number of calls, it came up to thirty-six forty, but it wasn't the day that, it wasn't divided by the hour, by the number of just duty day coverages, it was, it was overall. It just gave us a, not knowing how many calls you get based on what position you're playing, it just sets us up so we have a measuring point from, like a baseline. So we budgeted fifty-two days, which was seventeen thousand four seventy-two. Really, we took that minimum wage pay rate times twenty-four hours, times fifty-two days in just one day a week, being that Scott covers three days, I cover three days, and we share the other day periodically, or a volunteer will be able to cover it on duty officer. So we spent around two thousand seventy-six just for coverage. And like I said, the ten thousand covered the days that Scott was out, and I said there's fifty, how many days were you out, did I say?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight days. So probably the two-thirds of that was covered by duty coverage. And again, it was reimbursed by OES. So another ten thousand five hundred fifty-two was committed to work projects. A large portion of this was covered by California Fire Foundation Fuel Management Grant. So we did pay them out of stipends, and then the grant reimbursed stipend for that money as well. As we move forward in, with the budget, these items are going to be subject line items to where we won't be breaking it out of stipend, it'll be paid out of work project, it'll be covered, it'll be paid out of duty coverage, things like that, so we can get a more finite expense and see if we need to add more or reduce it.
So we pre-fund it?
Exactly. Yeah, and I'll talk about that, the finance portion, but yeah, that's the idea, so that, yeah, it's all accounted for beforehand. Well, any questions about the emergency responses? Anybody? I said this was a participation PowerPoint. Did I already kill you guys? Okay. I even tried to put really fancy things in there, like Scott's doggy. Okay, equipment.
Why don't we pay that guy an hour connection?
Okay, so chief's vehicle is a twenty-seventeen GMC fifteen hundred four by four. They write a forty-five thousand, anticipated replacement projected around twenty-thirty. Just being that a hundred thousand miles based on use, that could be extended or shortened. Depends, it's doing really good. Typically, ten to fifteen years, and Scott said by then we'll all be in electric vehicles, so that was one of the things that we talked about. Assistant chief's vehicle is that two thousand ten Ford, started out with seventy-four thousand miles on it, it's four by four. It was twenty-seven thousand, anticipated replacement. Twenty-twenty-two, it may be degraded to the utility, and the utility would move on. And then that vehicle would be replaced with a vehicle that fits the fire prevention model, because there are specific things that, that work for that better than what we're currently working on. The utility eighty-six thirty truck is a two thousand four, I don't remember the miles on it when it was purchased, but it was a used unit. It's well, almost to a hundred forty, a hundred fifty thousand miles, the price is around eight thousand dollars. I put in there replacement because it's already met the criteria for replacement, it's just a matter of when we look at our operation, and we get this plan done, and we do our budget, how we'll approach that.
Are we still utilizing that, do you have it on a regular basis?
Yes. We just use it for training, and then we're using it when we do our re-debating, when we do things around, it, it comes in handy, and doing the things that, like my, my truck and Scott's truck, it's full of this different equipment, and so whenever we need to load hose, or we're going out to re-debating, or we're going out to classes, training, things like that, we've been using it. Okay, so eighty-six fifty-one's our type six brush patrol two thousand ten, is the F-five fifty Ford pickup truck, four by four, three hundred gallon tank, two hundred fifty gallon GPM, anticipated replacement would be projected at twenty thirty-five, and that's just the twenty-five year life expectancy of a frontline engine. It could end up in a reserve if it's still in operational condition, it could be sold or something of that nature. Our master virtual aid plan is now focusing and looking more at type sixes statewide. OES has gone to a lot of type sixes. Scott took it out on a OES assignment last year with other type sixes, it performed extremely well. The unit as a type six strike team performed, the state liked it. I anticipate seeing it getting called out even more. Eighty-six sixty-eight is our new type three, model thirty-four, twenty-nineteen Pierce International, four by four, five hundred gallon, a thousand gallons per minute, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, anticipated replacement will be long, you know, nighttime, this is twenty Eighty-six ninety-six, the type one, that's our structure engine, two thousand ten HME Ferrari, it's seven hundred fifty gallons, fifteen hundred gallons per minute, thank you, Scott. It's three hundred fifty-five thousand, anticipated replacement, twenty-five a year would be at twenty thirty-five. So we're sitting really good there as well. Scott really liked the colors on that tanker.
I love red and black.
Water tender, we're looking for something twenty-five hundred to three thousand gallons, two hundred fifty gallon minute, almost the average. Probably somewhere in the potential of two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we would look for grant funding, something of that nature. And that's just something we'll project as we go. And we said we have four hundred gallons, four thousand gallons on wheels in the fire department, it rate it, can lower the OES insurance ratings on homes that are greater than five hundred feet away from a hydrant. So that, that's always something, and we've been talking about this for quite a while, it just needs to meet and fit the model that we're moving into, so we'll continue to look at that.
That'll help me out by twenty feet from my hydrant.
To your front door.
What happened with the, the water tender with Camp Rockers, still on the table, or?
Well, you know, I'm going to say no, because honestly, they changed from that military command, which the commander said, get rid of it. And then they changed the base order to a civilian operation. They put a civilian in charge of paraphrasing as far as the base is concerned, and the military's taking military operations. So when they go there and they get housing, food, public works department, fire department, security, that all falls under a civilian, who doesn't give new orders every four years. And so they changed that model, and when they did, and they added this new Kid City, they said, hey, you know, federal, they switched over, they gave them two new type twos, they're giving them three brand-new type threes. They're going to have federal and state equipment, federal and state firefighters, and so with the fires and everything, one of them said, let's take that water tender and park it out at range control in a shop or something out there, out near the range. And so they get fires, they've got a plan of utilizing it, and by who, I don't know. So they're still tossing it around, but as far as it being on the market and available?
No.
No? Yeah, we're bummed.
Where are we at on the sale of the other?
Um, I've, I've reached out to a second company, we only got about seven bikes with the first one, I don't feel there's a lot of movement from them. The second company, we have a couple potentials, we can put it on consignment, or we can sell it outright, which obviously would be a lower price. The first company was a ten percent on the sale, and the second company's only seven percent, and they allow me to advertise wherever I want. If they sell it though, they get their seven percent, so that's the difference on it. But we're pursuing those avenues, and I, we kind of went through the winter time, which right now, we're moving into the time where everybody's hot looking for stuff, and I'm hoping we get something to happen in the next couple of months, or we'll, we're going to just flood the market anywhere that'll sell fire trip.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
The difference between that smaller engine that was the one you said that went out of town and everybody liked so much, what's the difference between that and the typical big fire engine in terms of its use?
Um, well, it's smaller, it's more agile, and they use it to get into harder access points, and it was used up in, where was that, you guys?
Lake Isabella in the Sequoias.
So they, they called them up there because it was the access points for it, they do get better fuel mileage, they're.
Four-wheel drive?
Uh, it's four-wheel drive. It just, the only thing is, it carries a little less water. They can run with only three, two people actually, but we run it with three, and the whole strike team did. Again, cheap, they're cheaper, they're cheaper to replace, they're cheaper to maintenance, they're cheaper on, on fuel, but they have less capabilities.
And they don't have the ladders and that.
Right, they don't carry all that stuff. So they have less capabilities, but at their call for a specific purpose, they're cheaper to operate, and they don't pay as much, obviously. If we take that versus the big engine, we're going to get so many dollars an hour for the big one, and that one's less. I couldn't tell you that number offhand, but Scott might remember it.
It's based on your pump capacity. So wherever your pump capacity is, that's where the dollars break down, so it's a, it's a fifty-two, five hundred price range, and then five hundred to ninety, ninety-nine, and then a thousand, and then twelve hundred and above.
So is your gallons, and then go up on your pump?
It's based on the pump, which you could have put a bigger pump on an engine that size, you only have three hundred gallons of water. So with the two hundred fifty GPM pump, that's, that's.
They, exactly. So general maintenance, repair, let's see if we get back on here, oh, needs, so general maintenance, repair, and we budget that, so we need to stay focused on our budget and make sure that we're putting money in to maintain the equipment that we have. And so it's back to dollars, you know, just making sure that we manage that. So any other questions about equipment?
Are we affected by any of our equipping lying under the top of the emissions? That's, you know, they're, well, it's the, the diesels.
Tier, the tiered emissions.
Yeah.
Um, everything that we have, like when we buy our new engine, has the DEF, is that what you're talking about, the emission system?
Yeah, the, the new stuff I know is, is covered, it's fine.
Your, your old stuff pretty much stays in service until it's phased out. Nobody's come along and said, you have to take that engine out of service. I don't know if they have a cap on fire equipment or not.
The type, the type ones exempt from the DEF systems.
Okay.
So, but.
I'm sure the tier four anyway.
Yeah, they anticipate that we're going to, like everybody else, that it's going to be replaced in a certain amount of time. So like right now, we can't go out and buy anything that's non-compliance. And so whatever's in compliance goes through its lifespan, and then when it comes out. So if we had an engine, like we had one at CMC and we sold it, we can sell it in California because it didn't meet the compliance, so.
Right.
It had to go down to whoever bought them and shipped them down there, so I don't know. So they took them out of the area. Any other questions, comments? Okay. Let's see what pops up. The annual maintenance, okay, so this is basically a budget and a, and a thing for the master plan as far as our budget goes and what we have to focus on. The fire department performs weekly engine checkouts, inspections, emergency response equipment to ensure that it's in service. Ongoing maintenance and repairs will perform throughout the year, that's why we budget a certain amount and make sure we cover it. And then twenty-twenty-one budget line item, we're set at thirteen, set at thirteen one hundred sixty-six for vehicles and ten thousand for equipment, totaling twenty-three one hundred sixty-six required to meet the financial needs. Some of that's based on past performance, some buying new equipment will be less maintenance, but maintenance and care, we have to keep up with it, and you have planned, scheduled inspections and maintenance, and then you have unplanned. And so not knowing what unplanned is, that number needs to have kind of a little bit on the higher side, but doesn't, we wouldn't anticipate spending it, we just don't want to have a number in there and then have something happen, we can't meet our obligation. Annual maintenance items, besides engines and stuff like that, the things that we have to focus on, on a, on a regular annual basis is structure turnouts, and they have lifespans, and we have to keep them in service, they get inspected like every five years, and then start looking at replacement after ten years, based on the department with our call volume, that's rationale, and we've been really fortunate, got grants, and we're sitting on fairly new equipment right now, and it's good. Wildland gear is the same. SCBA air machine, it has quarterly air test and annual maintenance on it, so it stays in compliance because it's controlled air, and you have to have a certain quality or you can't fill the bottles. We have ladders that require annual inspection, there's a cost to that, they have to be certified yearly, and they come here and do the test. Hose, we test ourselves, but it, the pass or fail, if it fails, we have to purchase new ones to replace it. Pump test is performed by a certified mechanic, it can't just be one of us out there on a hydrant making sure water comes out. That's an annual test, there's a cost accrued with that. Engine annual bit inspection, and that is a bumper to bumper, check head to toe to make sure everything's working and, and running in order. Fire extinguisher inspection certifications, all our fire extinguishers have to be checked and recertified each year, and then they, every six years, actually get broken down, serviced, and, and put back in service. And then monthly facility inspections, so checking out, making sure everything here works, we have emergency lighting, we have water heaters, we have gas lines, electrical generators, solar panels, lights, lights everywhere, which we got one out that end of the building we got to fix. Any questions about maintenance?
For the SCBA's, are you just running regular air, is that oxygen or anything like that?
No, the machine basically compresses ambient air, and it's twenty-one percent oxygen, so you have to have a special system to, to enhance the oxygen, and that would be like scuba diving, nitrox or something like that. So we just, this here has to be certified, you get an air sample, send it off, they check, test it, and we get a certificate, and it's every, every three months or so. We usually have the, the vendor or someone come out and run a test on that, and they have to check everything at least once a year, if you can get them to come out.
You do the quarterly testing, we do it annual maintenance on the machine. Is some of the, the personnel equipment, is it getting near the end of its lifespan?
Everything, no, right now, we're, we're sitting really good because we, we have to buy some new equipment, because equipment does get used, but in general, our wildland is good, our structure gear is good, our SCBA's are all good, they're fairly new. So when, all those items that are real expensive, one, we got grants to cover most of that cost, and part of a master plan is forecasting when those things come due based on engine replacement, equipment replacement, all those items, if they fail those tests, the repair or the maintenance. So in the master plan, when we do our budget, we'll outline based on timeframe, how those things perform, what line item will get what under maintenance and service and things like that. So it's kind of, it's a big encompassing thing, so.
So Rob, those maintenance items you had listed.
Yes.
How many of those are items that are done in-house as compared to, you have to pay for someone else?
Structure turnouts would be done in-house until a ten-year, and we would package them up, send them out, they would certify them, send them back. Wildland gear in-house, SCBA air machine contract, ladder is contract, hose is in-house, engine pump test is contract, a mechanic, the bit test is mechanic contract, fire extinguishers contract, that takes a special license, and the monthly. Fire extinguishers contract, that takes a special license and the monthly facility is in-house. Sounds good, any other questions? I'd like that one. Okay, so training, there's another big department function for us and it's worth mentioning because of the uh cost accrued and and personnel. So uh we ta- we train three times of of three nights out of the month, six o'clock to ten o'clock. We have firefighter specialized training, we'll do emergency medical training, get our calls, sixty-something percent are medical, so we try to focus on that. They have to be continued education if they're EMTs and we do that to keep everybody up on par. So one night out of the three drills in the month, we try to dedicate to to medical because we do a lot of that. We do CPR, AED training once every two years, we try to do it about three times, twice a year. And then that's four times and then um every two years we do a certification. And it's available to uh the the public, staff and everybody as well. Hazmat froth road, to be a responder, you have to be through a froth road that can be done in-house. It's aware, first responder awareness and first responder operational. And that just means when you roll out of here and you see a green cloud, you don't run up and and breathe the green cloud, you don't taste the chemical on the ground, you you check it, you know what to do and you set your evacuations and your your zones and that type of thing. Driver operator, uh we have a uh, you have to do driver operator one A, one B, you can get a driver operator certificate. We have a training curriculum here for them to go through and required hours on each piece of equipment before we let them operate. We don't let someone just walk in the door, jump in the engine and drive off. And then there's people that during drill, a lot of them get assessed, they'll go with Star or myself, we evaluate their competency and their knowledge and their abilities. And then uh they do an overall test, so we do a walk around with them, a skills driving, take them out, drive them, do a little written test. And then they go to DMV and can get a firefighter endorsement, I think it's called exemption fifty.
Yep.
And that allows them to drive only our equipment, they can be a class C driver. But if they're driving a piece of equipment, they could drive this, but that's it, they can't go drive a dump truck or anything else.
Does the type six require the uh QDMP endorsement?
No, it's a class C vehicle. So really the, just the other two engines are your firefighter endorsement vehicles. Uh Wildland RT one thirty, every year we put everybody through this, it's annually required and it covers all aspects of Wildland firefighter training, it takes up several drills. Uh fairly um intensive uh course uh with all the things they really need to know. Pump driver operations, so not only driver operator, but pump operations, knowing how to pump water and work the water systems, get water from a hydrant, get it to another engine and that type of thing. Fire ground operations are just moving ladders, pulling hose, knowing when and where and how to attack a fire, given instructions and use fire techniques like ventilation, rest.